Okay, in my meeting.
Okay, is Lee signed in yet? Or do we have Bert?
I don't see either.
Let's give him a couple of minutes. But he also have a power issue this morning?
Yep.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, even in the Halim, we went off and on.
Had to reset all the clocks.
Yeah, my big monitor that I attached my laptop to didn't come back to life, so I hope I didn't fry it with that little power surge.
Karen, Lee's having difficulty logging in. Let's give him a few more minutes. I'm gonna see if he'll log in on the phone.
Thanks, Scott. Oh, there's Bert.
Good morning. I was into the 4:30 PM meeting in July. I didn't have the right link, sorry.
Okay. ODOT has entered the building.
Hi Karen, how you doing this morning?
Good, thank you very much.
Good, happy to hear it.
Thanks, Eva, for coming today.
I'm still hearing a lot of echo. Is it just me or is anyone else having an issue hearing today?
I am not.
I I've been hearing some reverberation, Karen.
I didn't get that, John, I'm sorry.
Everything's fine on my end.
I've got a lot of noise on the back end of mine, so I'll try to keep mine muted as much as possible.
Okay. muted. We're still waiting for one more commissioner. And I have some construction happening in my yard today, so I'm hoping I'll mute myself whenever I'm not required to speak, so hopefully it won't be too annoying for everybody else.
Pee-wee Herman died.
Oh.
Oh, I'm starting to hear that.
And I just just now they I got a notification. I'm like, oh, Pee-wee.
Should we speak in Pee-wee voices for the meeting to like honor his legacy?
Leila, what's your recommendation? I know staff is booked solid today.
Karen, right now I'm on the phone with Lee. I'm on the phone with Lee right now, so he's having issues.
Okay.
He call in, Scott?
Yeah, okay, he's gonna hang up with me and try again.
Okay.
Let's give him a minute. If it's the commission and the chair, good with that.
There he is.
Him must have been kind of region wide.
Okay, we have Lee in here now.
Okay, Lee is not on video yet, but I that's as long as he can hear us, that's great.
I can see him now.
I'm here.
Okay. Um, I think all the everybody that needs to be here is here, is that correct? Today, so I will all this meeting of the planning commission to order. It's July 31st, 2023 at 10:07 AM. Today's agenda is a continuation of sorts of the July 17th, 2023 public hearing on a legislative issue to be heard by the planning commission. I would just want to remind everyone, the planning commissioner appointed by the city council and service volunteers. Our role is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about land use matters in the city of Manzanita. Today, we are only making a decision whether or not to recommend the transportation transportation system plan to the city council. That's the only land use matter we're hearing today. Let's see. I think what we'll kind of run this meeting in the same way that we usually do. I will open the hearing part on the proposed plan. Staff can present an overview. Commission may ask questions of staff and then we'll hear any general comments from the public. And then we'll close the public testimony and leave it to the commission to make its decision. I just want to start with this. The proposal is the final draft of the transportation systems plan developed for the city of Manzanita. The planning commission has heard several updates throughout the process as the plan was under development and staff, including contract staff, have held several open house meetings to collect and process community feedback. Under the current comprehensive plans, the planning commission is designated as the committee for citizen involvement. Therefore, we are the body that represents the will of the citizens in making recommendations to the council land use policy matters. Because this is the final draft, revisions to the transportation plan are not under consideration today. We are looking for an approval of the plan as presented or not. So before we start, let's ask the usual questions. Are any of the members of the commission needing to announce an actual or potential conflict of interest? Hearing none. I will continue. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias? I don't hear any of that. So let us open the here. As I said before, we've received an extensive review of the steps taken to develop the plan at previous me at the previous meeting and throughout the process have given input and recommendations to staff. So would Leila, I guess I will leave it to you to give us a brief history of an overview of the development for anyone that isn't aware of what we're doing today?
Well, I can give a very high level one. Yeah, just that we've gone through a number of different both community engagement activities as well as updates to both the city council and the planning commission to get to this final document. We've been working on this started a year before I got here, so I believe it's been three years in the making. So really what we're asking today is for the commission to provide a recommendation to the city council to approve the plan. If we do get that recommendation today, I'll start working with the city attorney to draft an ordinance that the city council will be considering. Likely because of where we are today, that will have to be in October. We have certain notice requirements to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. But just to clarify for folks that are tracking the cop plan, this will be our first step into the update of the comprehensive plan. We'll be updating goal 12 with text amendments that reflect the policies that I believe have been thoroughly and thoughtfully vetted in the transportation system plan and then officially adopting the cities, I think I believe our very first transportation systems plan document. So we anticipate that hearing to occur in October.
I I lost that last sentence or two, Leila, would you mind?
Not at all. Not at all. I I said that we anticipate having, we have to notice DLCD. We wanted to wait to get the the approval of the planning commission before we started that process. So we expect to have the public hearing at the city council, the first public hearing on in October.
Okay, are there any questions from the council to staff or comments?
I have a couple of questions, being the newest commissioner. The TSP plan is then has a technical memo kind of as a second document. And the TSP plan has high level comprehensive goal. You know, policies within that plan. The technical memo also repeats the comprehensive goal policies. But then it also moves into suggestions for the ordinance ordinances. And so I think a primary question I have is the transportation plan looks really terrific. I think that personally that there could be some refinements needed in the ordinance section of suggestions. And then and probably a larger question about as the committee moves forward with, you know, a comprehensive plan and presumably significant potential zoning changes. Is this a remodel of the zoning code? Or is this an opportunity to look at a community development code? Which is different than the zoning code remodel? So those are two questions. First, can we make a recommendation to council to, you know, adopt the transportation plan with a subsequent recommendation that take the opportunity for refinement of the ordinance suggestions?
Thanks, I'll I'll start with that and then if any of my colleagues want to add to it, they're welcome to. So that's a great question, Bert, thank you. Yes, so the first step is adopting the policies and going through the process to get the policy framework in place. Part of what the grant that we received from ODOT did is provided ordinance amendments, so recommendations for amendments to the ordinance to help implement those policies. And so that's the next step for the planning commission will be to work with staff to review those ordinance amendments. There's additional changes that we need to consider, so to sort of work through that process so that we can amend the ordinance. We'll have to figure out the timing in terms of those amendments, whether we do them separately from a package of amendments related to the comprehensive plan update. But I think some of the amendments that we'll be putting forward to the planning commission will share those. There's a technical memorandum that has those recommendations. Are I would argue more the necessary to do sooner than later. And so we may elect to advance those ordinance amendments in advance of sort of a comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance once we're through the comprehensive plan process. So that was that was sort of the vision I had is that we've done a lot of good work on this. Let's keep the fire under it and start working with the planning commission to review, refine and finalize those ordinance changes to get them put in place sooner than later.
So that just to clarify, what we're what we're recommending to the city council is really to adopt and support the transportation plan. The technical memo is not something that we're recommending at this point for support by the city council, is that correct?
That's correct. Planning commission needs some time to review those ordinance amendments and work through the process with staff on that before. You know, I think you or I would feel comfortable for us to put those forward to city council. So what we're asking today is for the policy framework to be put in place and then that then both requires and enables us to put in the implementing ordinance language in place. We can't do that until the policy framework's in place.
Okay, so we're we're it's volume two, basically.
Volume two, yeah, part two, and it'll take a little little longer to get through that.
All right.
But we have a great head start. I'll I'll say that the work that our consultant team and ODOT helped us with, I think really puts us very far down the path, but planning commission needs the opportunity to review, analyze and provide input on those recommendations before we put them before the city council.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Are we recommending just volume two or one and two, Leila?
Well, we're recommending, I think it's volume two, that's using the right language there, which is the the TSP itself. And then you'll be also, we're asking you to recommend text amendments to goal 12 of the comprehensive plan.
Volume one is sort of the regional piece?
Yes, we're adopting
recommending
No, we're adopting Manzanita's TSP locally.
Got it. Thank you.
And just one more clarification, I apologize for this, but in the technical memo, there's two parts. There's kind of the comprehensive plan stuff, which is essentially pulled directly from the the volume two. And then there's the second section which does describe ordinance suggestions, right? And so if we forward a support for the transportation plan, which is in volume two, that kind of takes care of all the transportation and comprehensive plan stuff, right? We don't necessarily need to repeat ourselves with half of the technical memo.
That's correct.
Okay. Good. I love volume two.
Any any other questions or comments? Clarifications? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I I like volume two as well as I reviewed it, except there is on page 32, there's I think a typographical error. It refers to Ocean Avenue. When it should say Ocean Road. There's a big, there's a big difference between the two and it's pretty clear to me that you meant to refer to Ocean Road. In that part of pedestrians.
Yeah.
So I don't know that that requires an amendment or revision or anything, but when you finalize this, make that change.
We will. It's chalk that up to Scrivener's error. We can get that sorted out.
Otherwise, I'm content with volume two and the changes that in policy that it would implicate for the comprehensive plan and I would recommend that to the council. And if you need a motion to that effect, I so move.
Okay, we don't necessarily need a motion if we reach consensus on this.
Okay.
But if not, then we'll we'll call for a vote. So I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to ask whatever questions they need. And then if there are additional comments from the public, now's the last opportunity before the final final draft goes to city council. And I guess by final final, I mean with that Scrivener's error corrected. How any, yes, go ahead, Bert.
Yeah, just, excuse me, just one more question. I I assume that there were will be a lot of other comprehensive plan policies that will come forward. And that language that would integrate land use and transportation, for instance, could be proposed at that time. It it is a little absence in this particular plan, but as we review land use and zoning and things like that, the comprehensive plan could be adjusted to reflect the integration of land use and transportation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. 16 other goals we have to update. But certainly goal two, land use will address a lot of that. And then I assume with the community input we get, well, there'll be a lot of overlap. That is, after all, our hopes and dreams here in Oregon is that land use transportation connection. That's a great point. I appreciate the clarification.
Karen, are we waiting for public input?
I'm well, I wanted to make sure that the commission got all of its questions out of the way first and then I'll I'll open it to to the audience if they want to add anything to the discussion. Is everybody satisfied on the commission with all the questions you have clarification?
I agree with Tom. I think that I I can't spell, so I would never have picked that up, but all the charts and graphics look great.
Okay.
Typical architects, we don't spell. Bert can agree or deny.
I that's why I love spell check.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll I'll open it then to any persons in the audience who want to make a comment. If you'll raise your hands, Scott.
Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay. Give it one more second in case somebody can't find the button. Okay, and we didn't, I just to for the record, we did not receive any written comments on this plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I still do not have any hands raised.
Okay. All right. In that case, I will close the public comment portion of this discussion and we'll invite discussion by the commission as we formulate a response. For my part, I believe that the plan was thoroughly vetted by both the community and staff and the commission and likely as well. So I am in agreement that we should recommend the plan as slightly modified to council. Frank or?
I am also in agreement.
Okay. Lee, we haven't heard from you yet today.
Well, I find the plan to be well drafted, well thought out. We did, as you pointed out, we did have opportunity over several previous meetings for input. It was well received. And I think that I think their consideration for our needs were highly valued, so I support moving this on to city council.
Okay, Phil, we haven't heard from you yet either. What do you think?
I support as well.
Okay. So I don't know that we need a specific motion, but what what is the exact language that you want, Leila? You sent that to me at one time.
And let me pull it up again. It wouldn't hurt just for good measure. Multiple screen things getting me to hang on a second.
We may have sent it out to the commission last night.
Yeah, I have the version you sent last night, Karen, if you'd like me to read it.
Okay.
Would you please?
I will. It says we recommend adoption of TSP, I guess, volume two, which was not in your text and the comprehensive plan text amendments for council to approve.
Any further discussion on that? Shall we say we've achieved consensus then and we'll make this recommendation as John read to council? Yes.
I agree.
I agree too. Sounds good and really amazing work to get to the finish line on this puppy.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, let's move that along to council. The only other business that we have is the approval of minutes from a couple of meetings, June, May 30 and June 16 is what I have is I'm not sure if Nancy's on the line. If there are any other minutes, I didn't see any other minutes that we have prepared to approve.
But Karen, those are the only two sets of minutes for this meeting.
Okay, and I see that ODOT has left the meeting. Leila, would you please express our thanks for them for being here today? I should have
I'm sure, well.
Could have said something before we just shushed them away. So let's, I'm assuming all the council has read the minutes of the June 16th meeting. Are there any? Is this the one I think Tom, you sent out a revision? Is that from? Oh, I'm sorry, we should do May 30th first. Sorry.
Karen, I I was not in attendance at those meetings, so I was staying from the minute section.
Okay. Any additions or corrections to the May 30th meeting?
Karen, I think I found a
The first remand.
Karen, I think I found a typo on page three. About halfway down the rebuttal section. It says for higher welling units, I think they mean dwelling. Higher dwelling density.
Yep, got it. Yep, got it. Okay, anything else? Any other changes or corrections? If not, I would. Love to hear a motion to approve. As. Revised.
Move to approve the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Frank. I'll second you.
Move to approve the main minutes with the uh. Uh, correction. From Phil.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All approves, say aye.
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 Okay, uh. There were no no's, correct? So we will approve those minutes. Uh, and let's move on to the June sixteenth. Um, I know, Tom, you sent to something either this morning or late last night uh, that would revise. Uh, page three, is that correct?
Yeah, I uh. This morning, and just a short while ago, I sent an email reply to the one that you'd sent out suggesting it. Uh, a change in one sentence of. Section. Four N, which is the part with the discussion by the commission um. I, to my recollection that. Change, and I, I hope everyone has it. It's in your email. Well, here, for the record, I should probably read it. Um. The consensus of the commissioners was. What, as it reads now, the consensus of the commissioners was that the open area should not be considered a park as there was not enough information submitted. Uh. My recollection was a little different of what we. What the consensus was, so I proposed changing the minutes to read as follows. The consensus of the commissioners was that some parts of the open area. Depicted in the application. Did not meet the common understanding of the term park because of their location, size, terrain. Vegetation and proximity to the classic street roadway. And without those parts, the application did not meet the forty percent open spaces park requirement in section three point oh three four A. Of the zoning ordinance. Um. Just. My recollection is, is that the information we had. That. Area that they were including in the open spaces park. Wouldn't qualify as a park. In, in common understanding. It's a. Long, short strip. Beneath the grade of classic street, a slope. Only ten feet wide, less in some places, so I, I. That was my understanding of, of our decision there. And I thought that the minutes would better reflected it modified as I've suggested. And, and I sent it out by email just so you could have it to look at, you know, rather than just hearing me recite it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that change. That, that clarifies. Uh, the record. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, no, I think.
I'll weigh in on that.
The, I, I think it encompasses the discussion that we had. I agree.
Okay. Phil?
I agree.
Okay. And did I hear from Lee?
Karen, am I allowed to weigh in on that even though I recuse myself from the actual discussion?
That's a good question.
Will you listen to it?
I did listen to it, and I, I believe that Tom's revision actually. Better reflects what you guys talked about.
Okay. Yep. Um, I, I have one other minor change that would have, well, maybe not a minor change in that same section. Um, a couple sentences before, it says conversation turned to whether units were or were not dwelling units based on attributes or transient lodging. And it seems to me that our consensus was that the units do meet. The definition of dwelling units. And therefore. Um, of the, the standards apply, so the density standard would apply. And I, I think we need to make that. That clear, and if that's my recollection, if yours is different, um. Then let's get that on the record.
No, that uh, that was my recollection as well, although it's a little. Kind of more nuanced, you know, the pla, the application that was given to us showed a variety of structures. Some of which, um, there was enough information about the structures for us to conclude that they were dwelling units. That is, they were living quarters that had. Four of the eight. Amenities that, that. Turned it into a dwelling unit. The, the problem was some of the other things. Seemed almost studiously silent on. Did they include a sink, a toilet, dish? Um. I thought, well, my view and I thought the commission's view was like. We're going to assume that it has those amenities if you're not telling us that it doesn't. And so we concluded that they were all.
Okay.
Dwelling, d- indeed dwelling units. So we, we got to your, your point. We concluded they were dwelling units, therefore the density standard apply.
Okay. Any other different recollection or? Reason not to uh, revise that language?
As I pointed out in that. Commission meeting. That definition of a dwelling unit is in the zoning ordinance to reflect the requirements for a single family dwelling. It's not in there to determine that something. Meets or doesn't meet the requirement if it's not a residence. I.e. a hotel unit. I've stayed in hotels with kitchens. I've stayed in hotels with three, three bedrooms. So the fact that it has those amenities doesn't make it a single family residence. Rather, a single family residence. Again, has to incorporate those features. In order to be considered a legal, single family residence.
Okay. So that was not a consensus then. Shall we leave the language as it is?
I would support that, Karen.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, then maybe this is a question for Leila. Does, does the record? Include just these minutes, or does it include? Uh. The. The. Videotape and audio of, of the hearing we held, so that. Someone wanted to know what we did. In, in detail. And all the nuances and, and the agreements and disagreements. They would have that audit to refer to.
Yes, we do. We retain the video, actually, and that um, according to state law. Kinsified says the minutes themselves. Um, we continue to do written minutes because that's just been the practice of the city, but yes, we retain that. It's available online. Um, and we include an archive as well back, I think, five years online, so yes.
So if, if somebody were to appeal the city council's decision on this to Luba, the video. Goes as part of the record. Of that.
Yes, we would send the video as part of the record, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll leave that one alone and let the conversation, let the record uh. Reflect the entire conversation. Any other additions or corrections?
Tom, you had one other note about a Roman numeral.
Oh, it should be five. Yeah. Um, the, the last thing, adjournment. Actually, it says. Seven.
Seven.
And it should be five.
Five. Okay, I'll agree with that. Um, that said, is there a motion to approve the minutes as revised?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Uh. With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved as revised. Uh, the only other thing on our agenda typically is uh, what's, what's coming up? And uh, let's ask Leila or Scott or Scott to weigh in on what's uh, what to expect at our August meeting.
Yeah, um, so I was hoping to do a joint. Planning Commission City Council meeting um, with Bretis from DLCD to do a comp plan one oh one. Um, with the resignation of one of our city councillors, I've proposed to wait until that person's appointed so that we can. Have the benefit of having. Full membership of all bodies, since I think it's relevant to both, so I'm in the process of rescheduling that. Um, but we will be having a presentation from um. Uh, developers interested in building some workforce housing and wanting to share the project as an informational item. And um. Will be likely coming into the planning commission in a couple of months with a full-fledged application, so. We'll get some more information on that and provide that to the commission in advance. We are anticipating an annexation um, of the transfer uh, station, so. For folks that are familiar with our zoning map, or I'm sorry, our, our. The city boundary map, it cuts the transfer station in half, uh, which creates some complexity. Um, so they are going to be coming forward with an application to annex the portion that is actually in the county. Like literally divides the, the space in half. And then I would offer up, um, I think maybe some further discussion, time permitting, on what a park is, uh, because I think that's going to be a relevant. Discussion points, uh, potentially for the workforce housing application and any other applications that come forward and uh, staff could use some. Clear direction on that, given the conversation that occurred uh, during the uh, hearing on Manzanita law, so. I, I would like to see, um, like to get some feedback from the planning commission on that and see if we can get closer to. Um, what is a park, since we have a good sense of what isn't. Um, so my hope is that we can get some consensus around. Uh, a definition of what that could be, and then that will help us as we. Uh, consider future applications um, in advance of formal amendment to the zoning ordinance. So that's what's on deck for August.
Well, I think that will help begin to clear that discussion about a park will help um, start clarifying um. Some of the other. Comprehensive plan goals. For open space, and you know, it'll, it'll kind of give us a head start and maybe we can make some headway. On another goal, you know, just corner by corner. Um, get, get.
Will that August meeting? Uh, be virtual?
Uh, yes, our meetings are virtual.
Okay. Is there, is there no plan to resume in-person meetings?
No. Not until we have a city hall.
Okay. Or in good weather, we could meet in a park. If, if we knew what it was when we got there.
Karen. Maybe Leila, um. Is, is it worthwhile to discuss some of the other definitions that have come up recently? Like hotel room or motel room or something like that, and try to get a. Definition of those or just. Kick that can down the road a little bit or?
Well, if you want my opinion, I think the park is the very, there's a very clear uh, need for that now, um. I think some of these other definitions, um, I don't know how hard we struggled with the definition of what of a hotel is since. We had a hotel, but um. I, I would recommend we wait and put those into the comp plan update itself. If we start doing piecemeal actions, I won't have capacity to do a comprehensive plan update, so.
Okay. Um, uh, are there any uh, applications? Um, in process that will be coming up? Other than what you've, the annexation and uh, the workforce housing that may. Come at a later date?
Uh, Scott, I know, I think we had maybe one on the forecast that we were looking at.
I believe that was it, the workforce housing and. Now, there is one other one, but I haven't heard from them since about Octo, uh, November.
Well, just because I get asked a lot, the brew pub on Lenita, is that what, people keep asking me what's happening there?
Oh, yeah, let me clarify. I've been asked that multiple times too, Frank. Good question. So the developers, instead of starting this project in May, decided to wait until the end of September. Uh, so they're not tying up Lenita.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So many other, I, I've heard so many other answers, but thank you for the official one.
We're always here to provide that, so never hesitate to ask.
Okay.
Uh, any other business? Uh, from the commission that we need to bring forward? Excuse me. Um, well, thank you for your thoughtful input on the transportation plan. It was a lot to. Slog through, and I know that um. Three, four of you are quite new to the process, and it's a good way to dive in and see kind of how these policy changes. You know, how they develop and, and go, and so we'll be ready to hit the ground running on the next one. When we're uh, Leila and I are going to be talking about which, which goal to. Tackle next. And uh, so we'll get that, get that ahead of us too. Uh, so thank you all very much. I will adjourn the meeting unless there's any. Other things that we need to bring up.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Go forth and prosper.
All right, enjoy the weather, Karen.
Thanks, bye-bye.